I got everything I think I need.
Whenever she's good, if she's.
Yeah.
No, just go ahead.
Well. Couldn't screw it up that bad.
I think it has going to the other side, Doug.
I think it's got the nurse. Try it. Nope, you're right.
So, so this, this has. Cause that's the, was the.
That is a purchase order thing.
Is it charging it?
Yeah, it just.
Would you rather plug it here?
Is there a plug there?
You'd have to be very careful not to, don't knock anything else out. But it might make sense.
You were horny.
It might makes.
It'll be a whole lot better.
Oh, yeah, it just makes sense.
Look at that. Actually, I'll chuck. Welcome to the Medina Township, uh, special trustees meeting, uh, set for three thirty on March seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mr. Christopher.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Eastwood.
Here.
The time is three thirty-two. First item on the agenda is approval of then and now purchase orders for Tama.
Mr. Chair.
And this is gonna be forty-nine.
Forgive me, I was, miss, did you give the date for the meeting and everything? Thank you. Sorry. I apologize.
Forty-nine, yep. I move to adopt resolution number zero-three, zero-seven, two-zero, two-four, dash, zero-four-nine, for a then and now purchase order for Tama Service Center dated three-seven, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents for property and liability insurance premiums. The departments are administration, road and bridge, and police.
Second.
Any discussion?
There's one other. Isn't there four departments zoning? Isn't that part of it? Or not? Isn't that, aren't there four departments?
Yeah, they, they, it's part of the admin. It's in the one thousands.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Enroll.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Hey, what the heck? Give it twice. Next item on the agenda is approval of accounts payable, uh, resolution. I move to adopt resolution, uh, number zero-zero-three, zero, excuse me. Should it have, should it have two zeros? Okay, it should be just zero-three. Okay, it's got, it's got the two zeros in front of it, so I'm gonna scratch one out.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, let me. We'll start over. I move to adopt resolution number zero-three, zero-seven, two-zero, two-four, dash, zero-five-zero, to approve accounts payable dated three-seven, two-three-seven, two thousand twenty-four, with check numbers three-three, two-three, two-three-three, two-four, for the total amount of two thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and seventy-nine cents, and incorporate this one-page document as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Next item, uh, is approval of accounts payable to Tama. I move to adopt resolution number zero-three, zero-seven, two-zero, two-four, dash, oh-five-one, to approve accounts payable dated three-seven, two thousand twenty-four, to three-seven, two thousand twenty-four, with check number three-three, two-five, for total amount, total amount of eighty-five thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents, and incorporate this one-page document as presented.
Can you read the check number again, sir?
Pardon?
The check number again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was check number.
Check number three-three, three-three-three, two-five.
Okay, three-three-three, two-five.
Three-five, three-threes, and two-five.
Two-fives?
Second?
Second.
Are you second?
Sure, I'm a second.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the permanent, uh, budget workshop. The purpose of this is to get us a little closer to the, uh, permanent budget, which will have to be, uh, submitted before, uh, the end of, uh, March, so March thirty-first. We have it up on the screen if, if people wanna follow along. So.
I just, I've got the temporary and I got last year's. So.
So we'll just go through line item by line, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first, first line item, uh, one thousand, one-ten, one-hundred, dash, zero-three, zero-six, uh, salaries, employee recognition.
Uh, well, here's the thing, too. If you look at your appropriation, we have the same problem with this worksheet like every time. It's missing line items. So the first one, like, at least on this appropriation list, it looks like small tools, equipment.
Mine, okay.
Which one do you, how do I have a different one from my mailbox?
I don't know. I got twelve-thirty-one. Is yours twelve-thirty-one?
Mine's twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
But it's completely different than that one.
I was gonna say, I got one that's, that's lining up with this straight on.
Which one do you, do you have the one where it's, uh, one thousand, one-ten, one-hundred, zero-three, zero-six?
That idea.
I'll tell you what.
I'll just follow you, cause I mean, like, right here, four-three-zero, it's down here. It's just like twenty-five items down, but on this spreadsheet, for some reason, it's number one.
Think a quick recess could copy me, so you're working with the right time.
What do you need? I can copy it. What do you need?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out why my appropriation status is different.
I make a motion to take a short recess.
Somebody over there's got one.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Miss, Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. Short recess.
But look at this.
We're back from recess. And now, I think we're all working off the same papers.
Time is three forty-five, right?
Yep, three, and the time is three forty-five. Thank you. Okay, so the first, first line item is, uh.
Employee recognition. Employee recognition.
Right. Uh, is employee recognition, that's account, no, count code, one thousand, one-ten, one-hundred, dash, zero-three, zero-six, employee recognition.
In the past, we've put money on there and it's always seems to be a struggle to get to use it. Do you wanna just leave the same amount on there for now?
Exactly.
I, I.
I, I just wanna clarify, too, for the employee recognition fund is to recognize employees, and that means any department of the township.
Right.
Or anything that we choose to, to recognize, and so it's not any confusion on what to use it for.
I totally agree.
All right, so five.
How much?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Next item is, uh, line item, one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, one-one-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, salaries, trustees. Uh, we should be.
I have a twenty-twenty-four compensation chart.
Yeah.
Here, yeah. You know, the, the most it would be, would be based off of, according to the, what her calculations were recently, it was over the ten million mark, and that would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-one cents a day.
Be sixty-three thousand, so if we said sixty-five to cover.
Eighty-one times two-hundred, right, times three, it'd be seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five?
Well, if, if you get the correction in there.
There's gonna be more.
A retro.
Exactly.
You're right.
So I would want to say add a hundred?
Or should be, you know.
Now, can we, if there's a correction made, I was told we could bring it in out of another fund.
Or you just allocate a hundred for it?
Allocate a hundred for it.
I think that's better.
Okay. That's what today is for. And the fiscal officer.
The next one is line item, one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, one-two-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, uh, township, uh, fiscal officer.
That on the chart is thirty-four thousand four seventy-three. Wanna go just thirty-four thousand five hundred?
Uh, we had.
Thirty-five thousand?
We just had thirty-five on there before.
Thirty-five?
You know, but that is just for.
That's just.
Right, so if they wanna have.
But if there's gonna be a, a customer there.
An assistant or something like that, then.
Are there other items that come out of the salary?
Be another.
Like other insurance, any other benefits or salary loss?
I don't know.
Maybe, or something, forty-five. Make it, make it fifty thousand.
Oh, hold on.
Are there other items that get paid out of the salary beyond just the salary? Are there, like, like?
Well, the way I was explaining is that the fiscal officer's assistant fiscal officer should be paid out of that fund.
Right.
The way I was explained when I was looking into it, I don't know if you guys heard anything differently.
No, that's what I, that's what it says. You wanna put.
You're here. Um, would, would you be looking at it in fiscal assistance? You know.
Or like a small allowance for one if?
Could you put an allowance in there and if it's necessary, it'll be used. If it's not, then it cannot be used.
We'd better off putting allowance in if we don't use it.
Twelve thousand, thousand a month, or fifteen thousand?
Yeah, that's, I'd be fine with fifteen, I guess.
Okay, then make it an even fifty.
Fifty.
See that, Danny?
Okay, next line item is one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, one-nine-zero, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, uh, other salaries. Which we had in there.
Eighty. We had eighty thousand in there, before last year, and.
That was for a couple of full-time, well, a couple of people.
Yeah.
So just keep it the same for right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you put in?
Eighty thousand?
Eighty. Next line item is one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, two-one-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, Ohio Public Employees Retirement System.
All right.
We had forty-one in there last year. We used.
We used thirty-four.
Right.
Right. Well, put some forty in there, or leave it forty-one?
I do.
Do we?
We, we added some to the fiscal.
How much is it going on?
We should bump it up a little bit. Forty-five?
Okay with that.
Yeah, for not making, yeah, this isn't.
This is round one. Yeah, it'll go up. It'll go up in a similar percentage of salaries. That's directly related to it.
Next line item is one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, two-one-three, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, Medicare.
Had six last year, used three point three.
Leave it at six?
Yeah.
What, what gets, well, what gets spent there? This one here, we gotta watch out for.
Next line item is one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, two-two-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, medical hospitalization.
We had one twenty-five and that went up, yeah, twenty percent. That puts you over one. Yeah, eleven of zeros here.
One fifty?
You gotta be at least one fifty, just to be even close. Well, what's the, what did we spend on? We didn't spend.
He spent ninety, he spent ninety-eight.
So.
A one fifty should be saved.
Yeah, one fifty's good. Thank you.
Other insurance has always been a thousand, and this, last year, we used four hundred and thirty-five of it, so.
Keep it there.
Seems to be, we haven't gotten close.
Do we, uh, that's all, is that the Aflac, Elaine? Other insurance?
Next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, two-three-zero, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, workers' compensation. We're at seventy, or seven thousand.
We use three, leave it at seven?
Yeah, that should cover it. Next line item is one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, two-forty, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, uh, unemployment compensation. We had five last year. We used nothing, leave it at five.
Done.
And that's, I think, the one-two, that we might have a credit in their account, too.
Really?
Yeah, so. So, uh, look at that.
Next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-one-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, accounting and legal fees. Last year, we had seventy. We used.
That's not an accurate number.
No.
That's not an accurate number, so.
No, that's.
I would, I think we could probably hold it at seventy. I don't expect to have anything crazy going on. What are your thoughts?
I know that number's not right.
Right. I mean, I also know we didn't spend seventy, so that's all gonna work out, but.
Yeah, I, I would keep it there.
Yeah, I don't know. So we'll go at seventy.
We can always move stuff on that one, because.
Next one is.
Do we wanna, well, we can come back and change that if we want to in another meeting, right?
Yeah, but I would start that one.
Yep.
One thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, three-one-two, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, auditing, auditing services. Uh, we're at fourteen thousand.
I wouldn't lower it any.
We still gotta pay one.
I think it's gonna be higher.
Yeah, I wanna just put fourteen or fifteen in it for now.
Let's put fifteen.
Let's put fifteen.
As we said, we can adjust that, too. Next line item, one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-one-three, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, uniform accounting, network fees. We had six thousand in there last year. It's showing that we used.
Half of it, roughly.
Thirty-two.
Are they, any fees for all that shirt work that we've been doing with them?
No, they haven't indicated that that was gonna be a situation, so I would think that, I would think that we could hold it there or bump it a little bit. Um, cause there is gonna be some training.
A little bit.
I'd go seven.
Seven or seventy-five hundred?
Yeah.
Yep.
Which one you want?
We'll go seventy-five hundred.
Next one is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-one-four, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, uh, tax collection fees. That was at fifteen thousand?
I think they're, yeah.
Yeah, leave it.
I think that's already.
Next line item is one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, three-one-nine, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, other professional and technical services. We were at fifty.
We used a good chunk of that.
Yeah.
I'll leave it there, or you wanna, wanna bump it?
We, we're gonna have some other things this year.
Is this where the computers, the new com, different?
Professional and technical, so it would be like lighthouse, it would be any wiring, right?
Not, not equipment.
No.
No, just.
But then setting it up, setting up the computers?
Yeah, that's still a service.
That'll be, that'll be under something else.
No, well.
Well, the, the labor is, is what this is part of.
I just.
But, uh, if we do get new computers, lighthouse is gonna be.
That's what she was.
Yeah, you know, working on all those things, it's gonna depend on how many bits, so.
Fifty-five or sixty?
Sixty?
Cause in the end, we gotta make sure it all works on the other end, too, so. Okay.
Uh, one thousand, one-ten, uh, dash, three-two-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, rents and leases. We had twenty-five hundred. We didn't use anything.
Leave it alone, leave it. Where would we use that, Danny? Rents and leases. I didn't think we did anything with rents and leases.
We lease, like, I lease my copiers.
Okay.
You know, so, cause I pay a, I pay a payment on it and everything else like that, so.
We do lease the copiers, but I don't know what you take so much.
But it doesn't, it's not gonna have the rents and leases line, at least not now.
Yeah, it does.
So, okay. Thank you.
Next one is line item, one thousand, dash, one-ten, dash, three-three-zero, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, travel and meeting expense.
I'll keep it a second.
We had fifteen, yeah, leave it there.
Done.
Question whether the number is even correct. Um, next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-four-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, telephone, put it seven.
Can we have a copy of our, our temporary budget?
Yeah.
Where's it? What did we put in there for temporary budget?
Or which line item are you on?
It's the telephone, three forty-one.
Temporary, we had four thousand.
So I would say seven.
But, well, where were we at with our?
We were at seven. Last year, we used four.
Right, we used, no.
So. I think we should be fine.
Leave it at seven?
Yeah. Next line item, one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-four-two, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, postage. Uh, leave it where, where it is, at seventeen fifty? Next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-four-five, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, advertising.
Leave it alone?
Leave it. Next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-four-five, dash, zero-six-one-zero, advertising paycheck, uh, S V S charges, and we had nothing there, so.
We'll leave it at nothing for now. It just seems really odd.
It's an odd, why, I don't know why it was in there, and I don't know why it hasn't been removed if it isn't gonna be used, so.
Do we pay for the paychecks through professional technical, or is how do you?
There is a, yeah, one of these accounts down here, I have to look at it, is paychecks.
Okay.
So, why we have this other one, I don't know.
Is it contracted services?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Like you said, there could be some situations where it could get you, you know.
The next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-six-zero, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, contracted services. We were at twenty-five. Leave it there?
I think so. We used about half of it, right, Chuck?
Next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-seven-zero, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, payment to another political subdivision, and last year, we had, oops, online item.
Thirty-three.
We had thirty-three.
About twenty.
Yeah, keep it.
Yeah.
Yep. Next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-eight-one, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, property insurance premium. We had ten thousand in there last year. Just leave it.
Did we, we have a breakdown here somewhere. We just paid the bill. So. I, I was looking for it, cause it's a bright yellow sheet, but. We can leave it. I made the adjustment in another form, I'm sorry. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
That was ten thousand?
Yep, ten thousand. Next line item is one thousand, one-ten, dash, three-eight-two, dash, zero-zero, zero-zero, liability insurance premiums. We're at forty. Looks like we're okay there. Leave it. Unless you know, I can't think of anything that's gonna come up.
Actually, like I said, we just paid the bill. Actually, like I said, we just paid the bill, so. I thought I had all that stuff when I came out from my back. The actual invoice breakdown.
You know what I'm talking about, Chrissy?
Where are you looking?
The O-T-R-M-A.
The one that we just?
The one we just did, the breakdown there.
Uh, yeah.
I think we should be fine, based on what we got here, I'm just. I le- I must've left it in the bag.
You're looking for the purchase order?
No.
The breakdown, what I put together that we were talking about this week on and off.
I mean, it's right on the then and now that you guys just did, so.
Where'd that go, did that pile next year, or?
Is that okay?
If it has those account codes in it, yeah.
Sure does.
Okay. So, this was liability, or?
Yeah, so we're talking about liability insurance.
For the general fund? This is. This is not applicable, so.
Sorry, yeah, it's not wasting time, it's a thing, so.
Let's keep going, I'm sorry.
Forty.
Yep.
Okay. The next one is line item, one thousand dash one ten dash four one zero dash zero zero, zero zero, office supplies.
Keep it the same.
Keep it at ten. Next line item is one thousand, one ten dash four two zero dash zero six, zero zero, operating fuel. We're at three thousand, I don't really see any reason for it, but, um, we're here to you.
Well, we s- we'll be selling the car.
Pardon?
We're gonna be selling the car, but they're technically.
It could go down to nothing.
Well, is this where your reimbursements for fuel on your trip should come out, right?
No, you get paid by the miles, so you don't get fuel.
Just get paid by the mile.
You tell me, we can do that, you wanna drop it to nothing, or you wanna go to a thousand?
Just trying to think of.
I mean, we're not gonna.
We don't have an administration card anymore, so we don't use fuel, like.
Yeah, I know, that's how.
Let's make it two thousand, that's right in between.
Probably, so, like, just to keep it open, I'd say just, like, do a thousand on it, and then we can always.
Done.
Figure that sucker out when we get to it.
Four thirty. Next page.
Next line item is one thousand, one ten dash four three zero dash zero zero, zero zero, small tools, minor equipment. And we had six thousand in there last year.
Fine with that.
Which, same thing? Yep. Next line item is one thousand dash one ten dash five one nine dash zero zero, zero zero, other dues and fees, we had four thousand.
Fine with that.
Looks like that should be enough.
Done.
Next line item is one thousand, one ten dash five nine zero dash five nine zero, zero zero, other expenses, community events. We had seventy-five in there.
Keep it the same.
I, I was gonna say, we'll keep it the same. But, is that, is that gonna be enough, I mean, you're, you're.
Yeah, we could always take, you could always reallocate later on, or, or move it, so.
You think that's gonna be enough, or?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Okay. Next line item is one thousand, one ten dash five nine nine dash zero zero, zero zero, other expenses.
Will we leave it the same, or lower it a little bit? It's up to you.
I would just leave it the same.
Next line item is one thousand, one ten dash seven four zero dash zero zero, zero zero, machinery, equipment and furniture, we had twenty-five, um. But, that should be enough, but, but we do have to buy, um, the cubicle and stuff, um.
Yeah.
You know, I, that, that should be sufficient based on what we spent. Next line item is one thousand, one twenty dash three two two dash zero zero, zero zero, garbage and trash removal. How come?
I, that was my question last year, cause we do have trash here, I think, I think they put it off to the fire department in the back, but since we don't have a fire department in the back.
That's exactly, that's it.
But keep it there.
Cause that trash can used to be back there.
Yeah.
We should keep it there, cause.
Lower that, well.
Yeah, cause it shouldn't be coming out of the fire, it should come out of this one now.
Right.
All right, yeah.
Just put it in there at the same, well, at two thousand.
Two thousand.
How much did we spend on the?
On the fire?
Yeah. Nine hundred and seventy. So, I think two thousand would be fine.
Would be fine.
Yeah.
Even with an occasional resident, put it in there.
Next line item is one thousand dash one twenty dash three two three dash zero zero, zero zero, repairs and maintenance. We were at twenty-five last year.
Think we're good.
We should be fine. Next line item is one thousand, one twenty dash three two nine dash zero zero, zero zero. Uh, other property services, we're at thirty-five.
Is that your, like, your landscapers?
Lampiers.
Lampiers.
We can leave it alone where we're at, you think?
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be. Yeah, we're gonna contract with them, it should be sufficient.
Thank you.
That was when we had an issue with them the last time, that's where, it is a contract, we could, took the money out of the contracted services, line item also, so, that was.
Next line item is one thousand dash one twenty dash three five one dash zero zero, zero zero, electricity, we're at five, looks like we should be fine now.
I know, I've only spent five already. Electricity's been crazy, um, yeah, I, I mean, I'm hoping.
Oh, we can bump it up a little bit, I'm, I'm going off what, what we spent, let, wanna bump it up a couple thousand?
It shouldn't go up more, but I mean.
We're only at two, and we got five, we'd have to go up a hundred percent, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's been high this year, hasn't it?
It's never been too bad.
I've had my, I've had three of my highest electric bills, so, but I'm, I'm fine.
Let's bump it up, let's bump it to seven.
Nah, I mean, even just, I mean, I think five should be fine, I just would watch it, you know? Just be careful of that one.
Next line item is one thousand, one twenty dash three five one dash zero zero, zero one, electricity, uh, Remsen building, which is nothing.
We need to figure out how to get that off of here.
It's actually off of the, we have to, this, this spreadsheet, it's not on mine.
Yeah, but it's not, by the time the appropriations.
By the time the appropriations, right. But.
Okay.
That's something that can get hidden on total by U A N.
We have, we have to hide them.
Yeah, but, in that one article from the OTAs, they were talking about at the tax budget time, to go and turn these inactive, and there was, that was in that article. Cause there's a lot in here that could get off.
Next line item is one thousand, one twenty dash three five two dash zero zero, zero zero, water and sewage, we're at five. We should be fine now.
Done.
Yep. Next line item is one thousand, one twenty dash three five two dash zero zero, zero one, water sewage Remson, again, that should be removed, but it's off yours, okay, good. Next line item is one thousand, one twenty dash three five three dash zero zero, zero zero, natural gas, we're at seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, that is another one.
That's another one. Is the fire paying for our gas, too?
No.
How are we paying for gas here?
I think they are charging the, the wing in the back.
I don't see a meter here. Well, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but there's been nothing paid out of this line.
That's what, we, we had the question last time, but we haven't had anybody to, so I would keep it in there.
Let's leave it in there? Something we just gotta look into.
I mean, it would make sense that the admin building is paid out of the admin gas.
Next line item, again, that should be deleted, or hidden. We'll go down to one thousand dash one twenty dash four hundred dash zero zero, zero zero, supplies and materials, we're at a thousand. We should be fine now.
Done.
Next line item is one thousand, one twenty dash five nine nine dash zero zero, zero zero, other, other expenses.
Leave it alone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we wanna add up that column while we're on?
Well, should add up, but.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
When we tear this building down back here, where's that money gonna come from to tear that down, is that gonna come from which department that had the buildings originally? Or are we going to just pay that out of admin, or?
Like, whether it comes out of the, ultimately the fire, the police and the maintenance, or if it comes out of the general fund?
Right, I'm, I'm sure our fiscal officer will help us on that one. That makes sense, I mean, nobody's using, I mean, the only one being used back there is service, right?
My, my thinking is it would come out of the general fund, because that's what it's gonna be developed for in the future, is my, that's my, my thought.
That's my thought, too, I just wanted to run it by, we use that other money, is that, would you use the other line for that, or? Well, you, you could take the money from the other, and then put it into the correct column for what that would be, it would be a.
Into the li- right line.
It's like, when they were building your building, what line item did we take out of, what was that one?
Buildings.
So, I would still think it would be buildings, wouldn't you, in a way?
Put it in your capital fund, hopefully.
Yeah, just to, who are we paying, is it technically a service? Not a product. We'll figure it out. Okay, just when we have the money to do it, when I get to that point. We should sell.
The tot- the total at this point, and it, it looks to me like it's one million, one hundred, two thousand, two hundred and fifty. And it's totaled up for me in the total general fund, it didn't just stop there, but. That adds up, right, I would have some, somebody earmark that amount, so. Okay. I don't know why it doesn't do that.
So, the next one is gonna be?
Next one's zoning.
Pardon?
I'm sorry.
So, H two is zoning?
Yeah. It's gonna be one thirty. One fifty, zero zero, so, the next line item is gonna be one thousand, one thirty dash one fifty dash zero zero, zero zero. Compensation of board and commission, uh, members.
Yes.
It should be, it should be okay.
Yep, it was twenty, it looks like, is there any reason that with zoning, not paying much, we can?
Nope.
Okay. By the way, Danny, this worksheet came from you, thank you, this is nice. All right, sir, salaries.
One thou- next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash one ninety, dash zero zero, zero zero, other salaries, we're at sixty. Should be okay. Maybe we wanna bump it up a little bit. Already know we should be okay at that.
Guess we're gonna get in the system.
Excuse me?
I think we're talking about salaries.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh.
No, I think we should bump it up. Sixty-five?
Done.
Next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash two one one dash zero zero, zero zero, Ohio public employees retirement system.
Bump it up to thousand? You bumped up the salary a little bit, bump that up to eighteen?
Pardon?
Bump it up to eighteen.
Oh, for, for this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say bumping up a little bit, whether it's eighteen or twenty or something, but, yeah, bump it up something. Eighteen then?
Okay.
Next line item. One thousand, one thirty dash two one two dash zero zero, zero zero, social security.
Leave that off.
That should be okay. Next line item, one thousand, one thirty dash two one three dash zero zero, zero zero. Uh, that is for, um. Medicare.
Is the same.
Let me do that again, I, this thing, oh, let's see where it. Oh, where's social security? Line item is one thousand, one thirty, two one two, dash zero zero, zero zero, social security, we're at five, we can leave it there?
That was a line off, folks. Thank you.
Next line item. One thousand, one thirty dash two thirteen dash zero zero, zero zero, Medicare, we're at five, we should be fine there.
Medicare was twenty-five, right, no, Medicare's five, right.
Yep, okay, we'll keep it there. Next line item is one thousand dash one three zero dash two two one dash zero zero, zero zero, medical and hospitalization. We should be fine if we were at twenty-five, keep it?
Just curious, with some of the things that we've been bumping up, and some of these that are over, you know, that one's like almost twice, would we wanna bump that down a little bit from time to time? To keep our total from just climbing up and climbing up, or leave it alone? You know, that one, that one I'm thinking could go to twenty, it's not gonna hurt us, I mean, cause it, we only used half of it.
What is the, um.
Just. What are your thoughts, Chuck?
I'm doing that. Fourteen, I mean, we should be safe at twenty.
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash two two nine dash zero zero, zero zero. Other insurance benefits, or, just leave it?
That's three hundred?
Three hundred.
Question. Back on that hospitalization, you guys are maybe more familiar, hospitalization obviously takes care of healthcare, correct? What does it do, does that take care of the HSA's as well? Or is that come out of some other fund?
I can't answer that.
Okay, fair, I just, just one of those things, thank you, thank you good no matter what, but, okay.
Okay, next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash two three zero dash zero zero, zero zero, workers' compensation. And we should be okay there.
Done.
That's three.
Yeah.
And then the one before that.
Obviously, you could pull a build up and see. Would that, he just say?
Really, you just say what account it came out of?
Pretty sure it comes out of hospitalization.
I think we think so, for sure, but.
Pretty, ninety-nine.
The only reason, only reason I question that is, cause when I look at the hospitalization.
Right.
Number there doesn't, doesn't work.
Right, but if you added.
If you added the HSA to that, it would be happy to get more. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that we have to deal with it right now.
We'll look into it.
Well, it, yeah, let's put it, put that on, I have.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we're. We're at the, um, line item, one thousand dash one three zero dash two four zero dash zero zero, zero zero, unemployment compensation. Keep it there?
Yep. Yep.
Next line item is one thousand dash one three zero dash three one one dash the zero zero, zero zero, Accounting and Legal Fees.
That was there because we keep trying trying to get something drawn up for you to be able to short step some of these unnecessary meetings.
Right, right.
And that, that's what that's been in there for the last couple of years, it just never happened.
Right.
We leave it alone, because we still wanna do that, though.
Sure, I mean, I. I don't know what, how much, twenty, I guess you could leave it in there and see.
Okay, we'll leave it then. Next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash three three O dash zero zero, zero zero, Travel and Meeting Expense. Which was at four thousand, leave it. Next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash three four two dash zero zero, zero zero, Postage, um.
Could probably go down to a thousand, because we don't do the, we don't mail the packets anymore.
Okay.
I like the way you think, thank you.
Fifteen.
We're gonna go down to one thousand. So see, eventually you gotta refill that machine, but.
I just, we just refilled it to like four hundred and something.
It'll be a, it'll be a thousand. Next, next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash three four four dash zero zero, zero zero, Printing. We're at seven hundred, leave it alone, just leave it.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna have to have some, uh, permits printed pretty soon, I'm almost through my five hundred.
Okay.
So, that's gonna cost something.
The next line.
Seven hundred enough for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, the next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash three four five dash zero zero, zero zero, Advertising. We're at two, just leave it there.
Okay.
Unless, unless you somehow see that we have to do a lot more advertising or something in the paper, or whatever.
I mean, we've got our meetings, BZAs, zoning commission, it's pretty much advertising, that's it.
So, we should be okay?
Yeah.
All right. Next line item, one thousand, one thirty dash four one zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Office Supplies. We're at two thousand, leave it there, or we could even drop it maybe a little bit, unless, what what do you?
You you could spend that pretty quick, Office Supplies.
Yeah, I I keep it.
I'll just leave it there.
Yeah.
Leave it, okay, that's fine. Next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash four three zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Small Tools, Minor Equipment.
Five hundred.
Five hundred, leave it. Next line item is one thousand, one thirty dash five nine nine dash zero zero, zero zero, Uh, Other, Other Expenses.
Yeah.
These are for the, um, temporary sign. Deposit, um, that you give back.
What is that? No, well, the Other, Other Expenses is something that you transfer from, it's a holding. But it's not technically, unless you were cashing out of that, which could be technically an other, because there's no category for that. But you can use other stuff out of there, is what we're saying.
Right.
So, we're, I'm fine with leaving it.
Okay, the next line item is one thousand, one thirty, seven four zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Machinery, Equipment and Furniture. We're at fifteen hundred, you see, we might have more than that.
It's just one department, that's just, it's just zoning.
Yeah, but I mean, fifteen hundred doesn't go very far, as far as if we if we have to buy anything in setting up the office.
I can go three. And set up one.
Okay. Is that where, like if we were to buy, update that computer for zoning, would that come out of that line?
Anything machinery, anything equipment, or furniture, so if she wants a new desk, or file cabinet, or?
But I mean, we we had a report here at a previous meeting talking about updating some equipment.
Right, well, the the computers, and I I haven't talked with, um, Officer Zizia, because he said about the middle of March, he thought he would know if he got the grant, that would take care of.
Talking about zoning computers.
No, I know, but there's, um, so that would, that would mean that there's X amount of money, so even if we bought, um, the computers there, I think they said it was around a thousand dollars a machine, um.
All right, Training and Services, right? That's a big fat doose egg?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what that one is, because it's zoning, but it's not.
It looks like a Police Account two one zero.
Deactivated.
Just keep it there?
Yep.
Pairs and maintenance.
Now, the next one, line item, one thousand, two one zero dash three one eight dash zero zero, zero zero, Training Services.
That's a zero.
We want anything in there?
No, I think these are inactive ones on the appropriations, so we'll just.
Okay, oh, it's not even, okay, no, it is there, okay.
It's there, but not.
These are all zeroed out.
Okay. Next line item is one thousand, two two zero dash three two three dash zero two, three one, Repairs, Maintenance. Now, Fire Station, that's nothing, I'm sorry about that.
And the next one is zero two.
Yep.
Electricity would be the next one.
Yeah.
That's the ones that is the streetlights for Ohio Edison.
And that one I would raise.
And put it to fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, the electricity, okay, so the next one then, what would you put in for the electricity? Fifteen. Fifteen. Next line item is one thousand, four one zero dash four nine zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Other Supplies and Materials.
We got a zero on that one.
Next line item is one thousand, four one zero dash seven three zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Improvement of Sites.
That's the one where I think that would the building work would be, you know? So I would say leave that one, but.
Improvement of Sites, would that be, um?
Is that, would would that be one for like raising the building, is that what you're thinking?
Right, and for this building too, like if you wanted to do work on the parking lot, or the lights, or?
Well, there's, just the back stairs, some of those things are are loose, I mean.
Yeah, but.
I mean, it's.
I would, I would keep it the same right here.
I don't have anything there, do you? I'm at zero.
I got two hundred and fifty.
I have zero.
You and you and yours.
Where are you getting your paper?
You're on seven three zero, right?
Yeah.
I'm on the.
One thousand, four one zero, seven three zero.
Yeah, improvement of sites.
Zero, zero.
We got zeros on ours.
I got twenty-five.
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, right?
There's two of them.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's one, two lines below that's two fifty.
Okay, we have to stay on the line.
This one's four ten, seven thirty.
Okay, so so the seven three zero, 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 zero is gonna be a zero?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we have line item, one thousand, five one zero dash four nine zero dash one nine, one nine. Other Supplies, Materials, that's COVID, that's nothing. Next line item is one thousand, six one zero dash three, seven, excuse me, one thousand, six one zero, seven three zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Improvement of Sites.
And what would you like on there, Charles?
Well, I'm trying to figure out where the heck I'm at here.
That was.
That was the two fifty.
Playground.
Right.
That was the playground?
Yep, the six ten, seven thirty.
But that would also be, well, we're talking about maybe a pavilion or something over that way too, so.
Right.
I'd leave it.
Okay.
Next line item is one thousand, seven six zero, there's seven two zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Buildings, that was zero. Leave it. Next line item is one thousand, seven six zero dash three, excuse me, one thousand, seven six zero, seven three zero, dash zero zero, zero zero, Improvement of Sites. And that was a hundred thousand, leave it there.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get some clarification on all these different improvement of sites once.
So we can actually add it, right?
Exactly, so I'll leave it for now.
Something like a ground sign or something?
I'd be like, uh.
We're just trying to get these line, these numbers set up, correct?
Yeah, it'd be nice if they had, like, you know how that one has, like, Remsen Building after? It'd be nice to have a little.
Clarification.
Okay, so the line item, um, one thousand, seven six zero, seven three zero dash zero zero, zero one, that's gonna be a zero. Line item, one thousand, seven six zero dash seven three zero dash zero zero, zero two, Improvement of Sites, Road and Bridge.
You are already covered in another line, are you, Danny?
We good there?
Here's the capital outlay line.
Next one is one thousand, seven six zero dash seven nine zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Other Capital Outlay.
We got that at zero right now.
Right.
I got a feeling we may be massaging some, moving somebody around.
We could be moving the money around, but leave it at zero for now.
Yep.
Next line item is one thousand dash nine one zero dash nine one zero dash zero nine, zero zero, Transfers Out. Road and Bridges Fund, twenty thirty-one.
I think they're all zero.
These are all zero to the end.
Yeah.
And then just go on down.
Okay, next line item.
Hold on, what's our total?
On a total?
Is that, that?
So we skip down, all these are zeros, we skip out of here then?
That is the total I have here. We do zero.
Skip down, right.
Is that one million, six fifty-three, seven fifty, that?
One million, six fifty-three, seven hundred and fifty, correct. Go ahead and write that, you keep in that track with the set totals. And we'll print this out, so. I remember the first year we did this, we didn't have enough papers, and we didn't have it on a computer, and it was all said and done, it was a, it was, it was a mess. So, this is real mess.
So the next line item is two zero one one dash seven six zero dash seven three zero dash zero zero, zero zero, Improvement of Sites. And that was a thirty-eight thousand.
Well, that comes from, uh, that comes from the number that we get for the motor vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where I think we took this.
I got that number from, yeah.
You have it what?
That, he he took that right off the certificate.
Right.
But last year's was thirty-eight, so. I'd say we start out low, and we can adjust it after the certificate comes. Well, yeah, this is just a worksheet here, so I mean, we're not.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll leave it at what's in there?
Yeah, because I mean, I got the last couple of years, and it's gone up each year, and last year it was thirty-eight, and then even like the gasoline was three eleven. And you got one ninety, so, but I mean, we, it doesn't matter, we can put those numbers in.
Moving up a little bit.
Yeah, we we're gonna get that, we're gonna get the certificate, I think that's the time change.
We don't know where our carryovers or nothing are, right?
Right.
We're not, we're not even figuring those in here, so. Yeah, dark.
So we'll leave that at the eighteen thousand, twenty-five.
We'll leave exactly how it has it until we get the correct information.
Right.
It's no point in.
We can't, we can't get a crystal ball, but.
Okay, so that.
Can, but the only problem is when you're looking at it, everything's upside down.
So then we're actually at, I guess.
Yeah, it's this motor vehicle, so now you go to gasoline.
Yeah, the next item.
Here, this is what you said, I'm pretty done for you.
Let me see what was here.
Because my original thought was just use what we had last time, and then amend it from there.
Okay.
So.
So then it's gonna be. So it'll be, um.
So do you wanna put the three eleven in there, or leave the one ninety?
Uh, it's, either one's gonna get changed, so.
What's that?
Either one will be changed.
The one ninety?
We'll just do the one ninety.
We'll leave the one ninety for now, one ninety, one hundred, one hundred and ninety thousand.
Whatever it is, it still gives me enough money for my graphics I got coming up.
Should be starting the road bridge. I'm just, I'm just.
I got pretty much midway on page four or fourteen.
Okay, so then we're gonna be down to Road and Bridges.
Right.
And.
Now, we did bump bump that up a little bit, um, from the crazy share from two eighty to three hundred.
You're you're talking about line item twenty thirty-one dash three three O dash one nine zero, 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 zero? Okay. So I'm like three hundred?
Three hundred?
Three hundred.
Well, these are already done, right, why not just, why read every single one of them, we can just go right down the thing, and if there's a discussion on one, we don't have to.
The first seven numbers are all the same, you could, you could just say, you know, the code of two eleven Employee of Retirement, Opers, or something like that.
Right, and then just go right down. Yeah, I would just say one ninety.
Yep.
You know, three thirty, or, or one, you know.
Two eleven.
Well, it's gonna be, yeah, it will be two, two thirty-one, two.
You don't have to do that, though, what we're saying, we, you don't have to keep repeating yourself, so we're in the road and bridge category, just say one ninety, salaries, three hundred. Two eleven, Opers, seventy-nine, we'll just, we'll fly through it.
Okay, fine. One ninety salaries, three hundred, over, uh, uh, line two one one, Opers, seventy-nine thousand.
Correct.
Line two one two, Social Security, nothing.
Correct.
Uh, line two one three, Medicare, ten thousand.
Correct.
Line two two one, Hospitalization, eighty-five. Line two two nine, Other Insurance, one thousand. Line item two three zero, Workers' Compensation, six thousand.
Can we fall back on that? Hospitalization.
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five, whoops.
We're, it, it, actually, that should be all right, I mean, went up twenty percent, we're just under seventy, seventy to twenty percent, it's fourteen thousand more. We're right there, um. If anything, that one might go up a little bit.
Bump it up a little bit?
Yeah, let's bump it to ninety, okay?
Ninety, fine.
Ninety, I just.
Ninety, ninety-five.
We'll go ninety for now.
Next line item, two two nine, is Other Insurance. Next line item, two two nine, is other insurance, it's at a thousand.
Yep.
Line item two three zero, workers' compensation, six thousand, up a little bit.
Yep.
Line item two five one, uniform, tool and equipment reimbursement, nothing. Line item three four one, tax collection fees, twelve thousand five hundred. Line item three one eight, training S V S, S V C, is fifteen hundred. Line item three one nine, other professional services, seventy thousand. Line item three two one, rents and leases, nothing. Line item three two two, garbage and trash removal, twenty eight hundred. Line item three two three, repairs and maintenance, forty thousand. Line item three four one, telephone, twenty three hundred. Line item three four five, advertising, one thousand six hundred. Line item three five one, electricity, ninety two hundred. Line item three five two, water and sewer, fifty eight hundred. Line item three five three, natural gas, nine thousand. Line item three six zero, contracted services, nothing. Line item three eight one, property insurance premiums, twenty thousand. Line item three eight two, liability insurance premiums, ten thousand.
Um, I bumped that up to sixteen thousand after seeing the automatic, the twenty thousand I left alone?
The liability?
The liability.
Liability insurance is fifteen.
Sixteen.
Six.
Sixteen thousand.
Good with that.
Office, uh, next line item is four one zero, office supplies, one thousand. Next item, line item is four two zero, operating supplies, thirty thousand. That's gonna be enough, does that cover, is that your fuel stuff too Danny, or?
No, that, fuel's a separate line.
Okay, I thought, okay, just wanna make sure. Uh, uh, line item four two zero dash zero one zero zero, operating supplies, road salt, forty five thousand. You're gonna have a lot left over?
Oh, yeah.
Line item four two zero dash zero six zero zero, operating supplies, fuel, thirty five thousand. Would, should that go up with the cost of?
I think you're okay, basically.
We'll do it for now, we can always move it later if need be.
Okay. Line item four two zero dash zero six two zero, operating supplies, uniforms, three thousand. Line item four three zero, small tools and minor equipment, four thousand. Line item five nine nine, other expenses, seven thousand.
We got, I think we got thirty five thousand there.
Pardon?
Am I looking at the right line?
Five nine nine?
Five nine nine.
So it should be, it should, it should be four two zero, five nine nine.
Why am I looking at, why do I got thirty five thousand, or am I, are we on other expenses?
You have that fuel, thirty, last thirty five was fuel.
At thirty five thousand, then uniforms at three thousand?
No, I only got seven in here for other.
Yeah, others, I only.
Okay, dope. I like seven better. Thank you.
Okay. Line item seven three zero, improvement to sites, two hundred thirty thousand.
Is that, was that where you were at?
Yeah, two thirty, we're improving sites.
Okay.
That would be like our concrete work we're gonna do up in the reserve.
The cul-de-sacs you were talking about?
That's the bid stuff, we gotta bid out.
Okay.
And then we got to, uh, call what we're gonna do on Cook.
Okay.
Line item seven four zero, machinery, equipment, uh, and furniture, a hundred and sixty thousand.
You wanna share that, some of that, or that's, we'll keep going, there's reasons.
What that is, I'm throwing that number in there. To get a new truck now, you're looking two to three years, you know, by the time you get all the equipment, so you gotta have a cabin chassis before you can even order the equipment.
Oh, I.
I'm looking, I'm looking possibly updating one of my trucks.
No, after looking at the equipment down there, that doesn't surprise me, no. Sixty, I don't work. Okay, okay, nothing on the next two line items, so that's the total of.
I got total of road and bridge at one million one hundred ninety one thousand seven hundred.
Yeah, changed a little bit, we bumped a couple of things.
Yeah, we bumped a few things there, so what looked at, I remember on that certificate.
Yep.
Okay. Next line items, this is for, uh, lines two zero four one and through. First line item is four one zero dash seven three zero, and it's improvement to sites, ten thousand dollars. Yep. Next line item is four one zero, seven four zero, it's nothing, it's zero, and the next line item is four nine zero dash five nine nine, uh, other, other expenses, zero. And then line item five nine zero dash five nine zero, other expenses is four thousand.
Total budget for the cemetery is fourteen thousand.
Went down quite a bit.
I've just thought off that certificate that I had, like I said. There's things I'd like to do that, do down there.
I have that certificate.
What's our capacity at on that cemetery?
Where are you at with, uh, bodies?
With who?
Capacity.
The capacity, are you at a sixty, seventy percent?
I couldn't tell you the percentage wise, but I'd really like to put a column burying, you know, what I'd really like to do, one of those.
That would be awesome.
Monument that you just put the ashes in. You know, it's one big like.
Isn't that just kinda fire pit?
Wouldn't take up as much space, you know, we're selling lots for.
Yeah, I know, you only put somebody in there.
You know.
Right now you got that one part that we don't, but we can only put like six or eight boxes in there, correct? That back corner lot? For the, that's totally different though, that's for the.
Indigent.
Indigent.
The indigent, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'd look into that, more and more people are doing that.
They are going to just the cost of it upfront, and we gotta charge enough to pay for it, you know.
Right, you're looking at.
Spring Grove is, it used to be a thousand and now it's, I think thirteen hundred.
For a hole or for a spot?
For a spot.
Okay.
But you can get two in a spot.
Okay.
And then it's like two fifty to open it, two fifty to close it. They even built a second one.
I think.
Before I retire, I'd like to do that.
Okay, so we got a day or two.
Okay. Okay, so the next. Police, yeah, okay. Okay, so the next, the next department is gonna be, uh, police, so they're all gonna be, uh, two zero eight one. Uh, two, two zero eight one dash, uh, two one zero, the first one is salaries, that will be one million twenty thousand, two hundred eighty one dollars, fifty cents.
Well, let's just get rid of the fifty cents, uh.
We can do that.
So, we're just trying.
Let's make it eighty two dollars, huh?
Sure.
Okay, next one is, uh, line, uh, two one one, opers. And I guess.
That's two fifty, is that what you got?
Yeah, two fifty, but yeah, must've, okay.
That was, that's why I wanted, can we take that out of the safety services, please?
Yeah, we have to look at the certificate too, because even just looking at our money that's coming in, the police levy brings in like a million, low over a million dollars. Um, the safety services levy was looking like two hundred and sixty thousand, I think we had seven hundred in there, so we just gotta this is gonna be one, we'll put it down here now and whether, when we get our cer- our certificates and everything, we'll have to see where we can pull it from.
So, you want me to go ahead and add it to this one?
Right now, we'll just do it as is, cause this again, it's just.
But you're pulling out of the safety services?
Yeah, so right now you would do a dash.
Right.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't even have the two fifty here.
Okay, right.
What does that mean? But what I'm saying is, once we do get our certification, I think we're gonna have to evaluate how much money we have, because even like last year, we were, we were pulling out more than we put in.
Than we're putting in, that's why I'm weary pulling out the two fifty.
Not me too, but then this is a worksheet, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
So we're leaving that a, a zero as far as under the P D?
For right now.
Okay.
And then we'll, once we get that stuff, we can figure it out.
Okay. Next line item is two thirteen Medicare, forty thousand. Next line item is two nineteen, other, other employees retirement contributions, blank.
Um, okay.
Then we, we go down to same situation here, um, line item two two one, hospitalization. And we're showing nothing, but we're putting in the column with two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's gonna change, but we'll just do it.
We'll leave that out there for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We might be tightening our belt.
Next line item is two two nine, other insurance, four thousand.
You see what we used before on that, or last time on that?
Yeah, we used, um.
I guess we used a couple thousand of it.
Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna say, we start tightening now. Do you wanna leave that at four or make it three?
Um, let's, let's make it three, just try to.
Just because.
Yeah.
I got you.
Okay. Okay, next line item is two three zero, workers' comp, fifteen thousand.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, we used thirteen last year, so.
Next item is two four zero, unemployment compensation, nothing. Next line item is three one one, accounting legal services, is five thousand.
Leave that alone, or you wanna drop it?
I don't remember ever using it yet, have we ever used it? I don't think we used it in my last term. Cause our lawyers serve the prosecutor. We don't have any legal fees, I mean, I would say a cut in half right now.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Next line item is three fourteen, uh, tax collection fees, twenty five thousand.
Hmm, I don't think.
We had twenty thousand last year. We spent fifteen or fourteen five.
Yeah, how much more is that gonna grow up?
I wouldn't think it's gonna go up thirty percent, that would get you good at twenty, wouldn't it?
I would stay at twenty.
Is there?
And when do we get, have we only got that fee?
What's that?
That collection fee, have we paid that one already?
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll find that out and then we can get an exact number on that.
You, you don't know chief, if they, we have a tax collection fee yet, do you? You don't know that we've paid a tax collection fee?
I am not sure, I don't think it would even go to the department, it would go to here or fiscal.
Okay.
Next line item is, uh, three fifteen, election expenses, blank. Next line item is three eighteen, training services, ten thousand.
Yeah, we use it.
Yeah, should even be bumped up, with, with, you're gonna be.
Well, we were at.
We're at seven.
Seven. I would keep it at ten for right now.
You're gonna have to bring in two more people?
We don't, we're, we're, we're replacing one that was leaving, and we're at whole.
Right.
We're not increasing.
I thought we were bringing in one more.
You find the money.
No, I'm.
Yeah, we got, we gotta get money.
No, I just, okay.
Yeah, so that's the next, I think we're at kinda like right at our limit right now, when we're playing with the salaries.
Next one is, uh, line item three eighteen, that's zero six nine one, training services, blank. Under that code, it's three, the next one is three nineteen, other professional services, and that was sixty thousand.
Okay, we spent forty last year, you had fifty allocated.
And now we're. Um, professional and trainings, or technical services, so that would be that would definitely be lighthouse, um, what else would that be?
It's not hardware or anything, so, it's not equipment, it's just.
Yeah, I'm thinking of stay at fifty.
Okay, we kept that at fifty, bros?
Yeah. Okay, so we're, we're at, uh, line item three two one. Is that right?
Yeah, rents and leases, we don't have any.
Rents and leases, nothing?
Fine.
Can we go back to other professional and technical?
Okay.
We also have some taken out of, um, safety services levy.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I have the, oh, from last year?
Yes. You put some stars beside your paper, I can't do that.
Some of these things, we, we've got the COVID money too, that we've gotta designate before the end of the year, so we can spend it too, right?
There's, there's, there's some things on the works there.
Right, right. So we spent seven thousand dollars out of safety services money.
Circle, circle back with that?
No, I mean, he's right, we're not taking, uh, safety services, you add that seven grand to this category.
Make it sixty?
Uh. Like yes, yeah, cause then that would be forty forty eight thousand that we would've spent, so I'd be three, yeah, close sixty.
All right, so we bumped that line up to sixty, sir. All right, so we bump that line up to sixty, sir.
Okay, the next, okay, so, three twenty-one, rents and leases, nothing. Three twenty-two, grass collection, is fifteen hundred.
And we were at nine hundred last year, so.
We should be okay. Line three, two, three, repairs and maintenance, we're at ten thousand.
Is that enough?
Should that go down with the, with the cars being, would that be, uh, with the maintenance?
I think I did bring it down.
Yeah, he, he was at fifteen.
Okay, okay.
'Cause they're all under warranty, so basically all that is.
Because we're on warranty, we'll have to pay for the brakes and that type of thing, but, okay.
So, ten thousand?
Yep. Three thirty, travel and meetings, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Line item three four one, telephone, seven thousand.
Yeah.
Line item three four two, postage.
Leave that alone.
Yeah, well, he's got five.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm sorry, yep. Line item three four five, advertising, tw- two hundred and fifty.
Sure.
Next line item, three five one, electricity, twelve thousand.
That's where we were last year, we spent almost eight, so.
Okay. Next line item is three five two, water and sewer, fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Next line item is three five three, natural gas, five thousand.
Okay.
Next line item is three seven zero, payments to political subdivision, is seventy-seven thousand.
Where am I at?
We were at.
And that's, uh.
We were at.
Dispatch contract, gas factory, and, uh, the only time it goes up is whatever, uh, depending on what raise they get contractually, and, uh, however, it would never exceed, uh, four percent, four or five percent.
Well, that's because we took it out of another, we took it out of.
We took that off the.
Yeah, because of, we were at zero.
We took it out of safety services.
Pardon?
Yeah, we took it out, we took it out of safety services last year, we're taking out of police this year.
Yeah.
So, seventy-seven is correct.
Okay, next line item is three eight one, property insurance, eighty-five, oops, property insurance eighty-five hundred.
Yeah, we were at seven thousand last year, and we spent over six, so.
Yeah, ninety percent of it. Next line item is.
Liability insurance.
Yeah, three eight two, liability insurance is fifteen thousand.
The reason we were like.
We used thirteen, yeah, we used ninety, ninety.
Oh, and the reason we're so high is 'cause we knew what those bills were at the time, so, when we redo this, coming up, we should have those numbers, and we can plug those in there, 'cause there's no point in allocating more.
No, I'm just, yep.
I'm pretty sure it's one time a year.
We, that's, yeah, we, we actually just picked a bill.
So, we'll get those, and, I notice, highlight each one of those and make it exact.
Yep. Next line item is four one zero, office supplies, and that was twenty-five hundred. There it is. Next line item is four two zero, op- operating supplies, twenty-five hundred.
So, that's that fuel though, what's that for?
Yeah, fuel's the next one down.
Yeah, I gotta.
Imagine that's your, wow. I would think that would be your guess, but it didn't take any money out of there.
Not out of that one, but it was taken out of safety services.
Yeah.
So, what is your pleasure in this one?
You wrote down forty.
Forty. 'Cause last year, we were at fifty, we put fifty in that line.
Well, but, I don't know what it spent, you know, I don't have the right page here, but, okay.
Okay.
Well, he's, I mean, if it was, if we took it out of safety services, which is twenty-one ninety-one, it looks like we spent almost twenty-six thousand.
But, yeah, we should've been taking it out of that line, I don't know, instead of the safety services, no?
We had, we.
Interchanging them.
Yeah, we interchanged them, so, to make everything work.
But we're trying to put more back into the police department, to grease up all the police.
So, you spent twenty-six last year?
Yeah, close, twenty-five and some change.
Do you wanna go to thirty-five or leave it at forty?
Right now, it's just leave it at forty.
That's fine.
Next one is operating supplies, uniforms, ten thousand. Next is gonna be the four two zero series, and the first one is, uh, line item two thousand, community relations grant, zero. Next one is four three zero, small tools, minor equipment, ten thousand. Next line item is four nine zero, community partners, is blank. Next line item is five one zero, dues and fees, eight thousand. Chief, what's that for?
That is for OPBA and AFLAG, and, uh.
Oh, okay, alright.
Union, I mean, uh, chiefs association dues.
And, uh, line item five nine nine is other expenses, that was fifty-five thousand. We, we spent more than that last year, didn't we? Am I looking wrong? Oh, no, let's see. Dues, dues and fees were fifty, uh, fifty-two hundred, other expenses, we were at, okay.
Opers, is that coming out of safety services?
Yes.
Try and take that all out of safety services.
Alright, so, at improvement in sites, he's got ten grand.
What's that?
We're, we're at improvement in sites right now.
Yeah, the, yeah, uh, two, two four zero dash, two one one, um.
Opers is nothing.
Right, uh, then, uh, seven six zero dash, seven three zero, improvement to site, ten thousand, right. Next one is, seven four zero, machinery equipment, fifty thousand.
Now, this is the one we, we kinda start here, because we got the fifty thousand dollar donation.
Donation.
Um, but, it needs to be put into.
The fifty thousand currently is in a general fund.
Right.
That needs to be transferred into here for use, and or, it can be earmarked there, either way. There's ways to do both, I understand.
Right, we just don't want it getting, getting lost.
But it doesn't need to get lost.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Park specifically wanted that to be used for equipment.
When I, when I was talking to the auditors, though, they did say you could earmark that in the general fund for the PD.
Oh, good.
So, there's another tool, there's different mechanisms to get to the same end, so, we can approach it accordingly.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably, probably better we get it transferred over into the police department, I think, I mean, it's, I mean, it's just, if it's under the police.
Yep.
Alright, so where we at now?
We are at a, almost need time to take a short break.
Need a drink?
Yeah.
Wasn't that fifty thousand in there then, we're never gonna put that?
Well, the fifty thousand, if we put it in here, ultimately, it shouldn't go here, 'cause it's in the general fund right now.
Right.
So, it, it should, that should be zero, with the understanding fifty thousand of the money that's in the general fund is yours, is my opinion. Okay, so that wouldn't be in the budget.
But do we make a different line item in the general fund, or, I mean, we gotta put it somewhere, or?
I, I think it's a, it's, it's a clerical thing, that we're gonna earmark it, I don't, the money's there, and if you're gonna create an account, I just don't wanna see us, in, in there, if you put a fifty thousand here, I think you now have it two different places.
Well, we have, we'd, we'd have to zero one out, I'd just rather see it in.
Or in.
In the police fund.
In the beginning of the meeting where we were doing the general fund, we should have a, an asterisk or something over there, with the fifty, I mean, that's, again, this is not my expertise with, uh, with this, so.
That's why I feel, if it's in the police fund, you can't make a mistake.
Again, this is just a works thing, so if we just put a big asterisk right here.
A big asterisk by there? We'll know in our total that there's fifty thousand dollars that.
Yep.
Is earmarked, okay, so we got the advances out, which is nothing, right?
Right, sort of it.
So, that leaves you, uh, total police budget, are we at that point?
Yes.
One million four hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars, with an asterisk that there's fifty thousand dollars that.
Are you controlling that screen, or where?
Yeah, one million four hundred forty-nine.
I see it now, it's the glare.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to our IT people, see if they can make that rotate for us a little bit, you're at a bad angle, that's all. One million four four nine five three two, point zero zero. I could've said that wrong too, I'm not immune to mistakes. Mr. Chair?
Okay.
I ask you to.
The next one?
Hey.
Chairman?
Want a break?
Can we, can we take, can we take a recess?
I wanna take a break.
Only after the three hour.
I make a motion for a re- short recess.
Second.
Go on.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
The time is, Bruce?
Five fifteen.
Time is five fifteen.
Thank you.
We're back from executive session, or recess, sorry about that, whatever it was, so, we're back from it, and the time is five twenty-one. Now, we're in. So, under fire.
Just gonna do the same thing.
You can, yeah, you can jump in and you're in a.
So, just down at three one nine, we're just gonna do the same thing, five hundred.
For, for the five hundred, right?
Mm-hmm, that's it.
Right, so the, the first, uh, line item is two one one, uh, two one 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 dash, two two zero dash, three one nine dash, zero 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 zero, other professional and technical services, uh, five hundred thousand.
Okay, forgive me, what, where are you at on that?
This is under fire.
That's in the fire department.
Under fire, so, two one one. Back down, I think.
Fire department is there. But I start with two seven three.
Yes, keep scrolling down.
Keep scrolling down.
Right there, whoop, a little more. Three one, keep going. Keep going, right there, huh? Where is this?
Line number two eighty-four on the side, Doug. On the left side.
Okay.
Line two eighty-four.
Two eighty-four, and here is rents and leases.
Yeah, that's good. I'm sorry, two eighty-three.
Other professional technical?
Yeah, that's what, that's what you said.
Yeah, but isn't it, um, on mine?
On, on which one of you?
On, on the worksheet. That was three one nine.
Yeah. Two one one, two two zero, three one nine.
Are we in twenty-one ninety-one?
Two one one, one.
Two, 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 yeah, two one one, dash, two two zero.
Three one nine.
Three one nine, dash, zero zero zero.
Right.
I think, I think we're at the right spot, now, two eighty-three?
Yeah, line two eighty-three.
Okay.
Okay. That was the big number of.
Five hundred.
Okay.
Is that for the fire service?
It's, it's been in there, it could be used for the fire services, but we've been paying that out of safety services, but if something goes down with a truck or something like that, that's our responsibility, we have money there for that, or finding our equipment, so, it's been sitting there for a couple of years. But we do have, you know, if our safety services is low, I believe we can pull some of that out of there, we even split the two if we had to. Alright, safety services, police?
The next one is safety services. Going to be two one nine, or, excuse me, two one nine one dash, two one zero dash, one nine zero dash, zero zero, zero zero, uh, salaries.
Alright, so, real quick, if Chief and I are on the same page on here, we're gonna take from two sections out of here, right? Okay, so we're gonna go with the opers and the hospitalization.
You're gonna do what?
Only taking out two line items, everything else is gonna be zeros.
Okay, so, because that's coming out of the other fund, so.
So, opers, which is two eleven, will be two fifty.
Where is that?
It's on the worksheet that I gave, gave you earlier.
This one?
Yes. Well, no, the worksheet that we gave you, which is, right here. You see these here?
Yep.
That one and that one. Okay, so just fill that in on your sheet, and everything else is zeros, don't, don't, don't worry about the preparation status. Okay, so, Doug, are you good?
We have to go to the retirement system.
We got the two five oh, or, two fifty for sour, or, for sal- opers.
Right. But then we have the retirement.
And then, is the next item, hospitalization, that you were taking out of here?
Yes, the hospitalization, two two one, will be the two seven six.
Two seventy-six?
Mm-hmm. And then that's it.
Okay, then, then what about the?
Nothing else comes out of it.
Anything else comes out of the police budget?
We, we moved it over to the police budget.
Okay, alright.
So then, the next page.
There's nothing in, all those training, everything, we took it all out.
Okay, alright. We just, we just interchange those two.
That's five hundred and twenty-six thousand so far, okay. Is that all that comes out of the safety services right now?
For right now, yeah, we try, like I said, we put more on the police side.
Okay.
But then.
Instead of having a whole bunch of little ones.
Yeah.
In that one, we took two big ones, so it's easier to track two big ones than like.
So you could move the money around? So you could move the money around?
Eight little ones, yeah.
So that puts you into the permissive motor vehicle, is that the next?
No, we're in the fireside now.
Okay.
The safety services.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have our perma- our temporary budget?
What?
I'm asking Doug if he's got the temporary budget ones.
Twenty twenty-four temporary budget?
Yeah.
That was.
Yeah.
Cause I think I had my exact, um, other professional technical in that one. I could not find that sheet in my stuff, my pile of stuff.
Okay, so where?
So two one nine one dash two two zero dash three one nine.
Other professional technical on the monitor?
Yep.
I got, you have here twelve five, does that sound right?
Yeah, and last year I put in eighteen.
And again, the, the temporary was, I'm sure we weren't looking at.
Well, I kinda knew that those two come in January, those two bills, but also, there could be some unforeseen stuff coming too in that category, that's why I wanted just to know what I had put in there. So. Hold on, two two, two twenty.
Which page you went?
Page nine of twelve? Oh, I'm not.
No, I had it fourteen.
I'm on the budget, not the appropriation.
And how much did I spend?
Twelve five on the temporary.
And last year we were at eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-five, so I'm thinking the eighteen should be safe.
Go eighteen.
Like we did last year.
Okay.
No, there's no rents and leases. Three twenty-two.
Garbage and trash temporary, you had it at five hundred.
So the garbage and, um, trash removal, we, we had it eleven hundred, and we did spend nine hundred and seventy.
What was, which line item?
This is garbage, this is.
Can we, can we take a moment?
Never.
Mister Chair?
I.
Make a motion for a recess.
Not real recesses.
Nope, I have to interrupt, um, this has to do with the checks. Can we do the amending of?
This one?
Yeah, there was some printing problems with the checks, so, and Angela asked if I could.
You'd like to do it now?
Yeah, so this is gonna replace that single sheet I gave you.
This one? I don't wanna work something up and be the wrong person.
I know.
This is oh five oh.
There, okay, so as long as he reads, reads those, yeah. We'll amend both of them, accounts payable, and then, um, we're adding this check to the warrant list because she'll void the other one.
Okay, so, does this?
We have to resend one?
Yeah, I would, I would rescind this one first, this year we're sending the warrant, three 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 two five.
Okay.
So that's, you know, gonna rescind that first.
Rescind that resolution.
Rescind this one?
Approve the accounts payable, yeah, because we have to go pick the checks up by six. Thank you.
That's okay. So, just, yeah, rescind that one with your left hand.
Right, right. Okay, so it's noted, we're taking a short break from the budget, and we're going to have a couple of resolutions here. The first resolution.
You're just gonna.
Wait, wait.
You're just resent.
Chrissy, come back.
You're just resent.
Cause, cause the numbers are.
These are resolutions you already did, so we're just amending them.
Okay, because this will be one, you want this one first, and then you want this one, cause this is the fifty?
Well, this is the check that's gonna be avoided.
Should he just read what you have there, or is he checking?
Yeah, just read this one.
I'm sorry.
Right.
Yep, read that and read that.
Okay, but should they go in in order to, so they make sense?
This one, this one.
Okay, cause, no, I'm asking, cause the fifty-one, and this is the fifty, okay.
Cause we're adding a, a new, a new check onto the accounts payable.
Okay. We'll start over, um, I move to amend resolution number zero three zero seven two zero two four dash five one. To void warrant number three 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 two five for the amount of eight, eighty-five thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Due to printing issues, and reissue, uh, as accounts payable warrant number three 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 two six. In the amount of eighty-five thousand. Four hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Will call.
Mister Christopher?
Aye.
Mister Eastwood?
Aye.
Mister Johnson?
Aye.
Next resolution, I move to amend resolution number zero three zero seven two zero two four dash zero five zero. To approve accounts payable dated three seven two thousand twenty-four to three seven two thousand twenty-four. With check number, checks, check numbers, three 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 two three, three 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 two four, three 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 two six. For the total amount of eighty-eight thousand two hundred two dollars and five cents, and incorporate this one-page document as presented.
Second.
Will call.
Mister, oh, excuse me, Mister Christopher?
Aye.
Mister Johnson?
Aye.
Mister Eastwood?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to the. Budget? And we're, yeah, line item, where were we?
We're in garbage and trash removal, three twenty-two.
Pardon, three twenty-two?
Yeah, so, we had put in eleven hundred last year, and we used nine hundred and seventy. But I'm thinking that this year we should be taking some of the garbage out of admin. You know, cause that's counting, that, we don't have garbage here, it's only garbage would be from the nickel, um, station six.
You wanna leave it alone?
I think we should leave it alone.
That's eleven hundred?
Mm-hmm. Um, I would just.
Yeah, you just.
Preparations and maintenance, the same too.
Okay.
What do you have for that?
Five thousand.
Okay, I'm on a different page all of a sudden.
The next line item.
Three four one.
Bravo. Is blank.
So we're at telephone, three four one.
Pardon?
We're on telephone, item three four one, and I have a thousand on that.
Okay, so this, this is just not gonna work on this appropriation status?
No, just use your worksheet right here. Cause I, I, I've got my own. So then after telephone, it's three five one, is electricity, uh, keep that the same also, that was ten thousand. Water and sewer, I was thinking I can lower that one, we were only at five grand last year. So, would I be safe in going like, sign five hundred? The next one is natural gas, I had, again, I had ten thousand in there, I think I can leave that one the same. For right now. Um, on that temporary budget, can you tell me what the contracted service one is?
That was your three forty-nine two sixty-four?
Yeah, so we already paid that.
We already paid that on another line.
Right, so we just put that exact price on there, we should be good, so, what is that, three forty-nine?
Three forty-nine two oh six four.
Two oh six four?
Two six four. Three hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-four is what I got here.
Okay. So then the next one, the payment to our subdivisions, nothing?
Correct.
Uh, property and insurance premiums. Um, we were at nineteen thousand, we spent seventeen thousand seven hundred.
This is for the fire?
Yes, the property insurance, three eight one.
This, this year was twenty-three oh fifty-three seventy-five, it's twenty, twenty-three thousand one hundred.
So we went from seventeen thousand to twenty-three thousand?
According to what we just paid? That's, that's, this was the sheet I was looking for earlier, but.
Yeah, but then that scares me for other things, because we didn't raise things that much, um, so you're saying for my, for this line item, we were at twenty-three?
Twenty-three oh five three point seven five.
So I just put twenty-four for right now?
Yep. The liability was twenty-nine oh two. Twenty-nine fifty, I think it's been paid.
So my liability insurance last year, we paid seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven.
I'm just going off what?
And how much are you saying it is?
Two thousand nine hundred and two.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay, stay at nine.
Okay.
It's cause it doesn't make sense.
Where do you want it, nine?
Yeah, cause I mean, it says we paid liability insurance of seven thousand seven hundred something last year, so I cannot see it going down to two.
Okay.
Unless it's multiple times you pay that. So, we'll stick at nine.
Yep.
Next one is operating supplies, um, I should stick it to five hundred. Small tools, minor equipment, I think that's a thousand would just be saved.
Zero for dues and fees?
Yep, and other expenses, we had the, the hundred in there, I'd keep that.
What did you add there?
One hundred. Probably.
One hundred or a thousand?
It was one hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand, right Doug?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, everything else is dashes down to lines seven four zero. That's machinery, equipment, furniture, we had ten thousand on there, um.
Drop it to five.
Well, we're supposed to be doing some stuff. Um, I would just keep it.
Ten.
Um, I have to pages. Had tax collection fees on there. So we ended up, originally had eight thousand five hundred, we raised it to fourteen thousand, and we did spend ten thousand seven hundred and.
So keep it there.
At the fourteen?
Yeah, keep it at the fourteen five.
Motor vehicles?
No, we're still in, um. We're still in the fire. So, fourteen five.
Fourteen five, for, for line three, three fourteen.
Yep.
Okay. I am, am I messed up somewhere?
You're in tax collection fees, it's, it's numbered three one four.
Okay.
The full number is twenty-one ninety-one two ninety three one four.
Okay, okay, so I'm here now, did you have anything in the. Political subdivision?
No, there's nothing in there, there's nothing in contracted services, nothing in out, or outlay, nothing in.
Nothing in tax collection?
Nothing in motor vehicles, yep, so, it's just the fourteen five.
Where's the fourteen five now?
Tax collection fees.
Thank you, that's fine.
And then there's.
Move it on to, what, move it on to improvements?
Yeah, improvement of sites.
You gonna strike it?
It'll be the same.
Okay.
That's the seven six oh seven thirty?
Yep.
And how much is that?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
That's it.
Can we scroll back up? To your, I just wanna make sure I'm okay from your. Small tools and minor equipment, we were at a thousand? The four three zero?
Yep.
And then nothing for dues and fees?
Nope.
Hundred thousand for other?
Yep.
And then nothing until we got to the seven forty line?
Machinery equipment furniture.
Ten thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then nothing until we got to.
Tax collection.
Tax collection of fourteen five?
And improvement of sites.
Improvement of sites. And that would put the budget for safety services at one million one hundred six thousand eight hundred sixty-four currently.
Yeah, that's a little high.
That's a little high. That's why we get these meetings.
And our budget last year was one million one hundred and eight.
Eight thousand one.
Was it?
Two thousand, or, two thousand dollar difference.
Two thousand dollars difference.
Yep, yep.
Alright, well that's, it's good it wasn't eight hundred thousand. For some reason I was thinking it was a lower number, but.
Well, we spent, even though we bumped those things up there, we, we spent last year some aren't two thousand out of there. Cause a lot of those big things, we didn't make any money out of it.
Right.
Now you're in the permissive mode.
Yep.
Just the one item?
Yeah, I think Benny had it on his.
He did.
Worksheet here.
Oh wow.
Keep putting my watch on silence for an hour, then an hour goes by.
Okay, so that's gonna be.
Primitive sites.
Yeah, it's gonna be, um. Two two three one, uh, seven six zero dash seven three zero, improvements to sites. And that was ninety-six thousand seventy dollars, I get ninety-six thousand seventy-one dollars.
We don't have that, it's not on. No, you have to go exact.
You have to go to the, okay, sorry about that. Um, ninety-six thousand seventy dollars and eight cents.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
That would be the total permissive motor vehicle license tax as well at ninety-six thousand seventy dollars and eight cents.
Lower than last year.
Well, you gotta get the certificate, right, so, it's, right now it's a number. Do you have anything in that law enforcement trust?
No.
Okay.
I do believe there is, there's like five hundred bucks in there or something, right? There's like five hundred bucks in there or something, right?
Yeah, you got two hundred and five.
Yeah, I'd like to figure out how to use that, so I keep that there for years on, cause it should have been used and closed a while ago.
Which which one was that?
This law enforcement trust. It's kinda like on this one here, it's got five sixty four seventeen, I don't think we've ever touched it in five years.
Should I put that in there?
Um. Yeah, I guess so.
Five sixty four seventeen.
Well, I don't, I don't, this is an old.
Okay.
Certificate, so I don't know what the exact mod is right now.
Well, that'll come out with the certificate.
Yeah, so just put five sixty four in there and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
So we've got the breakdown of the code relief.
You got. Would be nice to get rid of the T T seven two.
I was gonna say, we don't, that's, we're only using two two seven three numbers now.
Right, let's get rid of it, yeah.
Now, we have just a small balance left in there, but I. Where would you put that?
You got two hundred and ten thousand supposedly, right?
I didn't think it was that much, I thought it was one four.
I don't know, I mean, this is the appropriation from twelve thirty one, so unless we spent something since January.
Okay.
Where's your appropriation set?
Which page do you want?
Thirteen.
Same thing? Two ten.
Page thirteen, bottom of the bottom.
Are you on the appropriations status?
We're on the appropriations status, page thirteen at the bottom.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Says two ten, four eighty eight, seventy seven. Is that what you got?
Yep. Now, the only thing that I know of, what I'm what's kind of looking at would be um entering into the flock camera world.
There's a lot of. There's a lot of places people wanting to get into that, some parks, um. Flock cameras are a possibility.
Again, this fund's gotta be earmarked this year.
It's gotta be earmarked this year, you have two years to spend it.
Before the end of next year, right?
And I think it's the end of twenty five, right?
Yeah.
End of twenty twenty five.
Yeah, sure.
Twenty twenty five, I think it's twenty twenty six, but I was just on a seminar webinar here.
All right.
But regardless, you got.
Maybe it's something you have to get before.
We gotta get.
Right.
So now the pros and cons of the flock, I mean, if we were to go with something like that, is you you pay for them, but then you always have a service fee. So then, once that's, we use the coronavirus fund and it's gone.
It's gone.
It's gonna be coming out of probably the police or safety services for the annual, and what's the fees?
Twelve thousand a year.
It would be. Fifteen thousand every year after.
Fifteen thousand a year.
How, well, how many cameras are we looking at?
That's gonna give us five cameras.
Is it cheaper if we go with less cameras? Or is that like?
Well, it's it's gonna be cheaper, yeah, but it's not gonna give us the coverage that we uh we would like, you know, we want one for. The coverage for everyone coming into the town.
Right, but again, my my thought, from what I understand reading wise, is if we do get into the thing and we are paying the fees, then we have access to everybody else's cameras, right?
We'll have access to every camera throughout the United States.
So what's which is nice is cause you got Brunswick on one side of us and Medina on the other side of us who have a lot of flock cameras. That's why I'm ju- I'm just trying to be frugal too.
Yeah, right, Mountville has, they have cities.
I know.
And um the city has, same city is set up to where any, they anybody coming into the city, okay, they're gonna hit the flock.
Right, even in where where Montville and the city are, they got one going one direction with the city and the other one going the other direction with Montville, so they got it covered both ways. I'm just saying, we're not the city and we're not Montville right now, we're um but needless to say, it'd be nice.
I'm a believer in what you're what you're talking about.
I just don't like yearly contracts without having a budget for it, so.
You just gotta figure out, I mean, it is a very, I think, an important safety factor for the for our community.
I was just telling them, I was working with the Strongsville Police Department this week, they had that Amber Alert, they had that lady, as soon as she got off the freeway, they got buzzed that she was in the town. And they and they caught her within hours of.
Yeah, this would have really helped out on. The missing person from Hobby Lobby, we would have, we would have found out who she was actually with, okay, in that vehicle. All right, uh all the other ones that basically they found in Texas a while back, um and just all the calls we get up at Walmart, the thefts, all the accidents we have out here and hit, hit and run. Man, Neil just sent me two pictures of a hit and run that they had over there on Wildworth Road fifty seven. And uh that's how they got him too, off the flock camera. I mean, there's just the sus stories daily that we receive by email.
You know, people often talk about how you just physically can't be everywhere, but those flock cameras can cover a lot of ground for you.
And it's also if you get somebody that's just been involved in, you know, a shooting or something, that's and they're coming into township, we're gonna know about it.
I got a dumb question too, you know how the.
Lawrence?
Police cars have cameras on them and stuff like that, is there any way that they're going to uh work with those cameras on the cars too into the flock system?
I don't, I I don't believe so.
Cause that would be kinda cool too.
Yeah.
They add a whole nother spot, so, but so right now, uh you know, chief's asking for eighty five thousand, that'd almost be half of. That's, well.
That is for the five years, so.
That's five years and five cameras. Right, so that's, so that would be your fee for five years.
Yes, no, no, that's, yeah, that is a fee for five years and then after that it would go to fifteen thousand a year annually.
And so, but you paid at eighty five, this would be paid this year, and it would be, you wouldn't have to pay that again for five years.
No, no, nope.
All right, so something to discuss.
At 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 some point, they're gonna say after five years, any kind of electronics, computer equipment, they're gonna say, okay, that's outdated. Um here's the newer stuff.
Yeah, well, you know, it's.
No, I'm just, you know.
Note to yourself, invest in stock in flock cameras. All right, um.
And also with that too, is we're gonna have Medina County completely covered, cause the sheriff's department has it on their side over on ninety four and everywhere else. Brunswick has it, Hinkley has it, uh so we're gonna be, Medina County's gonna be completely covered.
Okay, so we uh.
I think it doesn't have to be a decision now, but just if we wanted to put it in there somewhere, would that be?
I think I think it's something we could think about now.
Is that professional and technical services? Or is it equipment? Cause it's kinda both.
Yep, I would say, cause there's gonna be a contract involved in it, professional and technical or contractor services.
It is something you'd split it. Would you put money in there for the cameras and? Equipment?
But that one time fee is good for five years, so that's gonna be equipment and contracts all built into one.
Okay.
So it'd be a two twenty or like, no, two ten, right? Better two ten?
Think two ten.
So I'm looking at what we got here, we got uh machinery and equipment and furniture. Uh and then you also have other professional technical services, so those are.
Your three nineteen number's probably where it goes, huh?
Yeah, so I'm thinking. I must seem like a, I must like a. White house maybe? Once they're up, that's. Category.
For conversation purposes, you wanna put another in there?
Yeah, I I just keep it up at three nineteen for right now.
For eighty five, ninety?
Well, it's a set price at eighty five, is it?
Yeah.
So just do eighty five.
Are you keeping track of what we have left over?
Be eighty five less.
Right.
Two hundred?
Yeah, this calculator's spitting weird numbers.
I got like two hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and eighty eight and some change.
I would think eighty five from two ten, you're gonna be. What'd you say, one thirty five?
Well, I don't know, I didn't say anything, I I had two ten. Four eight eight point seven seven minus eight five zero zero. I have a broken calculator.
I'm telling you what, it's weird.
Two ten, four eight eight point seven seven.
I'm coming up with one twenty five, four eighty eight, seventy seven.
So we still have a hundred. Am I doing this right? We still have a hundred and ninety two thousand?
No, I don't know what's going on here, I got.
Well.
Two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty eight point seven seven minus eight five zero zero. Okay. Zeros count, by the way, a hundred and twenty five thousand, four hundred and eighty eight and seventy seven.
That's what I got.
Amazing what an extra zero will do.
Oh, the final appropriation was five ninety seven, four eighty two, sixty seven, right?
Well, we're showing in that fund that we got two hundred and ten thousand. Remember from page thirteen?
Yeah.
That's what we have to earmark for this year. Uh the nice thing is, it can be anywhere from architectural fees to. Fennel to, you know, so it's versatile, they've let. Make, they made it a lot easier to spend the money.
Put it up, the balance, one ten, five nine oh and other expenses or?
Yeah, for right now, until we. And then you can just reallocate.
Hundred and twenty five thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars and seventy seven cents.
One two five, four eight eight point seven seven.
Okay.
What, one?
Hundred in the uh. Twenty two seventy three, one twenty five, four eighty eight.
Hey Doug, I think I missed something on fire.
Okay.
If it's a law enforcement, did you put anything in that law enforcement trust?
We didn't, um that was, actually I did, five hundred and sixty four dollars.
That's just like a holding number.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I meant, that's what I meant.
Oh, I got a total budget for American Rescue at eighty five grand, that doesn't make sense, does it?
No, if you wanted, if you put the other part in the other.
Other there. Oh. Well, probably just activated two ten, four eighty eight, seventy seven?
Yep.
Didn't activate that one. Fire rescue, is that our next item? Twenty two eighty one?
Uh, that's the foot pages here. That's L S D. I think we're safe, we keep it as what I had last year. So I had. Oh, let me see here, yes, I had. I had ten thousand in tax collection, we we spent five thousand in tax collection, so maybe we can lower that one a little bit.
Seventy five hundred?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Contracted services, is that the one that's gonna be like?
That's gonna be the big one, yeah, I mean, I would be honest with you, I would stay at the five sixty, cause when I did just the rough math, I was at five hundred.
I was gonna say, I was gonna go to six hundred based on some of those more recent numbers, but I can do five sixty. Tell people to quit calling.
Well, I got seven hundred and one in reserve, I don't think it would be a bad idea, even, okay, let's go here, I'm gonna take my most expensive month.
Yeah, times twelve.
Times twelve. See, that comes out to six forty eight, that's a little bit much.
I was just, seemed like we were flirting with fifty grand, a little above, a little bit below, that's where I was coming at six hundred.
A couple times. Yeah, let's just do six hundred, I think we'd be safe, I don't.
It's, that is one you'll have to keep an eye on as the year goes, so for sure.
I know. We're using that one.
Using that ultimately what, we got kinda caught on that a little bit, miscommunication more or less, I think.
I know I I had written, at least written out a hundred, so.
I know.
But I knew it was getting there, so that's just a communication problem.
Okay. So we're, we're six oh seven, five hundred currently.
Yep, six oh.
Got anything else up there?
No, I put those two things. Let's see, that's. That's significant, the last one last year.
Yes. What, is that a million?
Yeah, we're at seven point five.
Well, we spent a bunch of the ARCA money.
Right, yep.
So. Want to go with that for now until we get our certificate?
Yeah, yeah.
So the total twenty twenty four permanent budget after this meeting, seven million, thirty eight thousand, five hundred and ninety three dollars and eighty five cents. Okay.
So things I'd like to look back at are all those tax collection fees and stuff like that, so we we probably. Get those a good bit closer. I'm pretty sure that's only one time a year.
So the next item on the agenda is other township business, do you have any other business since we've already taken care of?
Um I know at the meeting I said something about writing letters to some vendors. And this kinda took precedent over that, so we'll pick, we'll pick that up and run with it, I do not have any of that to act on today.
Justin Johnson, you have anything?
Um the only thing, I don't think I mentioned, I mentioned the going to the uh. Uh county health department, uh that was a meeting. And uh it was interesting, uh they gave a lot of statistics, um how many different diseases and that they had serviced. Uh the one thing that stood out to me was um they had five thousand, over five thousand coronavirus cases. Um and then in flu, they had, I think, two different types of flu, very relatively few number of cases of flu, but they said. So many hospitalizations, you know, it was a very low number. And they said they didn't wanna use the coronavirus cases because it would skew the skew the number. And I asked him, I said, well, how many of the coronavirus cases would have been hospitalizations? And they said, oh, that would have been a hundred. So, yeah, there were coronavirus cases, but there were probably a lot more than a few flu cases over the winter. And uh but they didn't put the hundred in there uh for for the hospitalizations under coronavirus. Uh not not a big thing, but I I mentioned it in the meeting that I um and talked to him afterwards about it, that I think, I think if they're gonna have those.
I think if they're gonna have those statistics, you'd have, you should have them consistent in the thing, but it was, it was, it was a good meeting, it was a good meeting, so. And that's all I have, and so that's it, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Local?
Mister Christopher?
Aye.
Mister Eastwood?
Aye.
Mister Johnson?
Aye. Meetings adjourned at six oh eight.
Percy? Could use your assistance.